If you could all please stand. I have Ted Kitchens, the House Chapel is going to leave us an invitation and a pledge. That's the Ted.
Well pray with me, Father, thank you for this wonderful day. I'm reminded in the Book of Acts and a great sermon that the Apostle Peter preached that you're the one who establishes boundaries and nations and borders. That's the case that certainly you've established municipalities, townships, wonderful places like Little Park. And so we're grateful for that. Tonight, we're particularly asking you for your good favor on this council and the decisions they need to make. Asking you for wisdom and insight and discernment so that Little Park is a healthier, happier, more godly, peaceful place to live. I thank you, Lord, that this council's done such a wonderful job of that. Lord, I also ask you good favor on their families. This is a fun task, this service that they embark on and they lose hours of their own personal time to be able to serve this community. So would you return that to them in blessing and good favor? And just a sense of satisfaction for what they're doing as a service to this community. And certainly, Lord, I'm reminded about Proverbs that where righteousness expands, the city prospers. So thank you that this council understands the spiritual nature of this community and sees it as a priority. So our churches and our God and families and our Little Park community as a whole is able to live and bask under your good favor. So would you bless this evening's council meeting? May it all be easier than normal, quicker, more satisfying, and more productive. And I pray this is your name. Amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May it succeed.
At this time, we'll approve city council regular meeting minutes of February 11th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 11th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. First agenda item is to consider an act on ordinance 807-20 and ordinance canceling the May general election.
Anderson, all residents who are unopposed, we are unable to cancel this year's election. These ordinance just approved since they said that.
We have a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number 807-20 and ordinance at the city council of the city of Little Park, Texas, ordering the cancellation of the general election scheduled for May 2nd, 2020, declaring unopposed candidates for three at-large city council members to be elected to office, directing the city secretary to take certain actions pertaining to cancellation of the general election, providing separability clause, providing an effective date, and providing an open meetings clause.
Second. Any other questions or discussion?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Isn't that two times, two years in a row you've not unopposed?
Yes. Well, yes, right. Well, you didn't. You, you made it.
Item number two, to consider an act on the appointment of Scott Smith to the tax increment reinvestment zone board. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Scott Smith to the tax increment reinvestment zone board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Whatever.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Item number three, to consider an act on authorizing Jacob and Martin L.L.C. to perform a stormwater utility rate study. And a stormwater impact fee study is required for the city to create a stormwater utility and adopt associated rates and fees. Derek, do you?
Okay, well, if you recall, sometime back, we went over the drainage CIP and the capital projects that were identified as part of that and discussed how those could be funded. And we discussed a little bit about establishing a stormwater utility rate and possibly a stormwater utility impact fee. I've only got one slide related to this, so I'll, I'll get it to say. And so we kind of left it for discussion as to whether or not you wanted to pursue doing those, establishing those fees. And in order to establish a fee by code, you have to have a basis for the fees. And that generally requires a study for both the utility rate, stormwater utility rate, and the stormwater impact fee. And so I think the agenda item tonight is related to authorization to go forward with those studies that would be required for that. The CIP provides the, the base data that would be used to, to approach those fees. And then you have, we'd have to go through and look at some financial information and different things to, to actually come up with what those fees would need to be. So in order to, let me see if this.
Derek, is it on?
No, I'm, I'm looking for the on button.
On the left side.
I got it.
Eat that remote.
Appears to be on, but there you go.
Go to the.
There we go. That's what, that's really all there is for that part of it. I've got other things later, but. So for the stormwater utility rate, the, the charge for that would be $25,000. If you go ahead and do the, the study for the impact fees as well, that would be an additional $15,000. So kind of went through the, the preliminaries of that last time, just putting that before you to see if, if that's your decision to go forward with.
So we'd be doing both utility rate and impact fees at the same time if we think we want to use both of those?
Correct.
Considering?
Yeah.
What's the timing?
It, it would be about a six-month process.
Okay.
Should be able to complete it around September timeframe.
At that point, if council chooses, they could assess the fee?
Yes.
Or decide not.
Now, the, the process is you perform the study, was in a recommended fee or rate, and then you'd have to have a public notice period, 30-day period in a, in a hearing.
So, question. Do we budget for this?
For the $40,000?
Yep.
No, but we can, we have, we can pay for it. We, there's, we have some money out of reserve that we can pay for.
Okay, the second question is, if we're not intending on, on imposing the fee, there's no point to it.
That would be correct unless the way you'd want to do it is it comes back with a number that's just so unattainable or, or doesn't really meet what we want to do or excessive. And we don't know what that number is right now. And what this number does, what this study does justifies the number he's going to come back to us.
Can you remind us what the total?
The, the CIP?
Yeah.
It was, it was around 2.1 total.
Yeah.
Yeah, the study, essentially, the study would, the, the result of the study would be to determine what, what the, what a manageable fee would be. That would be one way to look at it. So rather than coming back with something that was, wasn't attainable, as Brian said, we'd have to develop a fee that would be, that you could manage.
Because I know several residents who have stormwater issues flooding here without Little Park.
Typically, and I don't want to, I don't want to paint a big rock rush with this, but typically it's more, the fee's going to be greater for more permeable square footage.
Correct.
So the more concrete, the more asphalt, the higher your fee's going to be. It's going to have limited impact on residents and more of an impact on, on your business.
But we use the money, we, we would utilize the money to improve.
Yeah, it's to pay for that.
Yeah.
It would have to apply to anything that's on the established CIP. So that CIP can, can change, but, but it has to be within your capital improvement plan.
We won't know what this is going to generate until we find, we determine the fees or.
Right. I threw out some examples last time, but that's exactly what they were. Without looking at your specific data, we wouldn't be able to say with any certainty.
Per the ordinance, state code as well.
State, yeah.
We have to do this study to assess the fee. If you have no intentions of ever doing a drainage study or, excuse me, a drainage fee, there's no point.
But if we intend to address the 2.1 million of drainage issues, it's most cost-effective to not fit and do tiny little improvements every year and get one contractor in and take care of it in a more efficient way, just like roads. And our only other option, the fee would allow us to do that upfront and have the fee paid back almost like a loan. And our other option would be figure out for debt.
One of the ways you could do it is you could actually both. You could actually go out for debt and then the drainage fee would service your debt. So you get all of your, all of your work done in 2021 or 22, and then it's paid for out of that fee that's generated subsequently.
Which is ideal. Get it done the quickest possible.
Any other questions for Derek? Do we have a motion?
Paul make a motion that we authorize Jacob and Martin to perform, perform the stormwater utility rate study and stormwater impact fee study.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Item number four, presentation by Mr. Derek Turner, City Engineer and Project Update, Water, Wastewater and Streets.
Okay, so this is kind of a general update on several items. Kind of just talked about the stormwater, that would be part of it. There was, I was asked to provide the, the street capital improvement table to you guys, which I've done and it's in this presentation. I don't have, there's not any active projects going on at the moment, but the total street capital improvement amount was 13 point, just under 13.2 million. And that covered all of the items on the capital improvement. Still going to work?
Derek, I'll do it.
Okay. Go to the next one if you would. Okay, that's, this is the table that's out of the, the actual capital improvement plan report. And it lists all of the priority streets that were, that were on that document. That hasn't changed. This is straight out of the CIP that was already produced that we went over a couple of months ago. So if there are questions about that, I can answer those. Otherwise, not a lot of update at this point.
So my question was, was from a financial standpoint, when, looking out in the future years, the next three to five years, when does that look like we're going to be able to start making an investment in these roads? And given our debt payoff and taking on new debt?
So Eric Mahal sent me debt schedules about 4:45 today. If you have any money at all in the stock market or you have been under a rock for the last 48 hours, you know interest rates are fairly volatile. Buying time, because hopefully I printed those things out and Bernie is telling me I did not.
Okay.
But I had numbers out, out here on my phone if you, if you don't. We're seeing interest rates right now, Stephenville did a 20-year CO at 1.95% fixed for 20 years. Eric Mahal ran numbers for us. The interest rate was around 2.8 on a 20-year CO. To give you an indication, we issued a tax note, which was seven years, a year ago, and it was 2.14 or something like that. So interest rates are falling. You're probably looking at. If you, we already said it's 13 million on roads, right?
I think 13.
13 and a half? Got something else you want to do on that?
Inflation.
Inflation? $10 million, a $10 million CO, you're looking at an interest rate or tax INS rate increase of 6 cents. Now, he's assuming a 2.8 and a 1.5% growth. Those are the two components you want to keep in mind. Your INS is 24.49 right now. He's saying in '21, you're looking at a 31.74. But then you retire debt in '26, which causes your interest in sinking to drop further down. And that's on a $10 million CO. I think that is a 15-year payout, 15-year payout. You could go 20 years on it. These are just examples. Two things. One, they tried to issue debt yesterday and no banks did on the debt, which is highly, highly. There was a city in Texas that, that, these things are already set, so that was set far along before the markets started doing their thing. They issued the debt of bids on the notes Monday. And of the 10 banks that were invited to bid, none of them put a bid in. That's an indication of how volatile this, this market is. It's also an indication of how cheap money could be. Stephenville, 1.95, low. I've asked Eric to come and present to us on the 24th, the various options as far as COs to the tax notes. Anything over 10 million, I'd like to do a GO. And to do a GO requires to do some upfront work, especially on streets and roads. Your situation's a little different because I think you're either going to have to piecemeal streets. So we do this street, we do, you know, pick top four. We do those this year and then we try to do another four next year or in two years or three years, whenever. Your interest rates are never going to go back down below than what they are right now. I will be stunned if you ever see interest rates ever slow. And I know you probably, you're in the housing market, you've probably heard that, heard that's fine. We'll talk later about water infrastructure. And right now, those, those interest rates are 0% for 20. So the, the point being is if you're going to issue debt, now's the time to do it. That goes against everything that I've been wanting to do for the last six months. I'm just, I, I wasn't comfortable with issuing that kind of debt, but I'm also seeing the cost of borrowing money so low right now.
And that would outweigh the inflation that we'd run into if we waited even, you know.
Absolutely, yes.
How long would it take to get the GO together?
So you'd have to do it on the, you couldn't do it on May election, so it'd be November 3rd or November 5th.
Okay.
So you have 90-day notice of the, of the general obligation bond. So you're going to put that out August 2nd. Or March 10th right now, probably another 30 days of a, a committee together, a bond committee together. Probably another 60 to 90 days to.
Will we be able to get it on the November or we have to wait till next?
No, I think you could. It just depends on how fast the bond committee would work. You, you could, especially if you're going to your streets, it's pretty self-evident.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
We've already got it prioritized and all that stuff put together, so it's a matter of.
You've got your payment condition index in there.
Yeah.
You already have those things.
There's no doubt it needs to be done.
You've got some things already built in and you already know where you got to go spend money anywhere. But it would be a process, you could get it done. I wouldn't wait more than, you know, if you're going to do that, I'd probably try to get a bond committee together by the next meeting in April.
Yes.
And give them a charge and let them move forward with it. Either, you, you either issue the big note or you piecemeal this year over year. Old Ford Road is the first one on the list, it always has been. I think you've got a few more, but you're probably looking at three to five million maybe, just on some of the.
On that first?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably so, yeah.
If you did Old Ford and that whole area, you're looking at about, what, 2 million?
Little over 3.
Little over 3. So if you did 3 million, I just happen to have that number. You did 3 million on a tax note, which is a seven-year, seven-year issuance. Your interest, your interest in sinking goes from 24.49 to 33.40, worst-case scenario. That's on a, and that's just to do one little section. And.
Um, you know how I feel about it. Let's, let's get it done.
I, I got it.
Yeah. And I think the residents want it done.
I, I understand.
And we put it before them, let's, yeah.
I, I understand. I'm just, you know, again, I'm going back and forth because of what's happened. Eric Mahal told me an hour and a half ago, if you're going to issue debt, now's the time to do it. If you're going to wait six months or nine months, you may see a correction in the interest rate market and they may come up.
Yeah, I spoke to a mortgage officer yesterday, actually, about this. You know, it had gone up and, and I was told that it will come back down because usually when the market, if things kind of go volatile, then money, you know, the interest rates tend to drop. But that was on mortgages, so I'm not sure how it works on the.
We're, we're typically tied to the 10-year treasury.
Okay. So it's a, it's a wait and see.
It is.
Any other questions for Derek?
Do you, do you want to provide some guidance on, on what you want us to do? And do you want us to prepare?
Yeah.
I can prepare a GO for you on a 20-year. I can prepare a CO for you on a 20-year.
Well, I would be in favor of putting together a committee and getting that started in case we want to go forward with that. How does everybody else feel about that?
I would agree.
I agree.
I agree. For the, the board, for a bond, putting together a bond committee, yes.
For the 13.
Yes.
We have that together and we can look at that in the next one.
If each one of you guys want to email me a couple of names that you'd like to consider for the committee, we can put that, I can put that on an agenda item for the 24.
Okay.
Eric, Eric or somewhere from Hilltop will be here.
So you think we could actually form a committee on the 24?
I think you could, yeah.
This is our call for applications.
Yeah, I think you could. I mean, it's unlike bond committees in the past where you've had a public safety building or maybe you have some other things. This is residential streets, so this isn't going to, I think, is Crown included in this as well?
Yes.
Is, is Squaw Creek included in this as well?
Okay.
So you will have some archery holes in there as well to get some feedback. I think that committee's good. I like having public feedback, especially on issuance this big. Some of the smaller stuff is really, you know, I don't want to diminish that, but clearly $500,000 is a lot different.
No, I was just speaking per agenda item. If we could act on forming a committee now.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's your, that's your street CIP.
Right.
But you've got more.
Yeah.
Hold on, sports fans.
So this will be fairly quick. So water and sewer is the next thing on the agenda. I was also asked to prepare a three-year projection for water and sewer forecast. And the next slide has that, don't switch yet, but that three-year projection on water is 1.9, 1.96, excuse me, million gallons per day. That's based on the development that we know about and the typical growth projections that we have. Your current well supply, the last numbers we have, last time the wells were ran, which hasn't been very long, is 1.7 MGD. Now, the, the Fort Worth water, and I'll go ahead and say that the, the projected 20-year demand was 4.38 MGD. These numbers are also reflected in the, in the CIP. Your Fort Worth water project is under design right now. And the, the capacity that, that you will get out of that supply is 3.5 MGD. So between your current well supply of 1.7 and the 3.5, you'll have a total of 5.2. I'm going to go ahead and, there's another slide that addresses this too, but that, that project is currently forecast to be complete in the summer of 2021. You go ahead and change slides, Rose? I don't know how easy this is to see, but this is the actual three-year projections for both. If you look in the middle of that top table where it's got the asterisk by it, that, that 1.73 MGD demand hits in 2021. So that's where you're vulnerable between the time that that Fort Worth project gets completed and the, and your, and your demand catches up. So we need to keep a close eye on that. You, you know, your, your wells, we've been through summers like this before recently where you, where you've kind of bumped that capacity. But these are actual capacities, aren't compliance capacities. In other words, this isn't a calculation based on what the TCEQ requires. This is based on what your actual GPM per connection calculates to be. So, so that's something we need to watch, but in the long term, in the three to five-year range, with the new project coming online, you pretty well have the water in hand. On the sewer, can you back up one slide?
Question, do we still have the emergency connection with Weatherford in place if we need it?
You do have the emergency connection. That would require going back to Weatherford and, and requesting that that be activated. So there's no guarantee that that would be done, but.
But the pipe, the physical.
Everything, everything is in place to make it happen if.
If we need.
And that's, and that's 200.
That's 200,000. So in that summer, and that's something that's been considered, obviously, that if you came to that, that time and that, that time of year and that, that peak overcomes, then, then that would be available to you.
So for this summer and next summer, where we face the risk that it's in place, if we.
Yeah, this summer's looking pretty good. Next summer is where you, you kind of start, it gets a little iffy, so. But, but that would be available to you if we could, we could go to Weatherford and request that that be.
You start digging, you start putting some pot in the ground.
Right. I'll go ahead and hit the wastewater real quick, then I'm going to back up to, to that point for just a minute. But on the wastewater side, your current average day flow is 264,000 gallons per day. I just want to be clear that, so there's months when you guys hit, I think this year, your highest was about 405,000 gallons per day. But your average over the year, over 2019, was 264,000. Your three, three-year projected average flow is 469,000. Your 20-year is right at a million. Your current plant, permitted plant capacity is 500,000 gallons per day. So, so over that 20-year period, obviously, something has to be done. You're in pretty good shape over the next three, but before you hit that 469,000 in that three-year average, you actually hit the 75% threshold, which is a TCEQ requirement. Once you hit 75%, you have to be in the planning stages of improvements to address that issue. So you're actually closer to that necessity than, than the numbers would, would lead you to think, but.
Would the SRF that we have in place, the various options that we're, we're having discussions about, does that constitute us being in the planning stage?
It, it, yes, it probably would.
So that many gallons a day is, you know, would that cover, you know, how laws change and TECQ is always changing regulations? If we have to migrate all the existing houses onto a sewer system, does that cover that?
The, the CIP actually, it actually goes beyond the 20-year period where we showed that hitting.
Okay.
That 20-year period is really more just normal growth, development, and things that we know about and, and project without including, now, it includes some of the existing residences. Right, yeah, there's, but.
What would the projection be if 100% of the subject tanks converted over to sewer? I'll top your head.
It's, it's in the neighborhood of 1.5, 1.45.
And that includes all overgrowth and everything else?
Yes.
So when we go to build a plant, we probably need to project at 1.5 or 1.7?
Yeah, so your ultimate build-out was 1.5. And that's with, that's with the, all of your available area being developed and, and the existing structures coming on. So the proposal we'll be talking about here in a couple of minutes and then going forward, will include your 20-year planning period and then, and then upsizing capability beyond that. So we'll, we'll talk a little more about that, but.
Okay.
But, but most of that, what you're, the question you're asking, most of that in the projections hit after that 20-year period.
Okay.
But you're, you know, within the short term, so you, the TCEQ permits run on five-year cycles. So you're in the, you're roughly in the middle of a, of a current, we re-permitted when we did the package plan. And so you're roughly in the middle of that five-year cycle. By the time that next five-year cycle hits, you're going to be pretty close to, you're going to be bumping your capacity of your plant. So aside from the TCEQ, the 75% thing and all of that, you're, you're actually, I mean, you're going to be looking at exceeding capacity in the short term, before that 20-year period. Again, your current plant is, is capable of 500,000 gallons per day. So you want to hit the next slide, Rose? And you can go on to the next one. Yeah, let me just, I'm going to. Yeah, let me just, I'm going to back up on you just a little bit for just a second because you mentioned the progress of the water line. This is Fort Worth water line. We actually, they just submitted the 30% set of design drawings. So that is moving along pretty well at this point. There are a couple of critical path items that need to be taken care of. The environmental assessment for the project is still underway, and we're scheduled to have a public hearing on that on April 14th. That has to be cleared before the T W D B will release funds for any kind of construction activities or design activities for that matter. So they're kind of, they're moving forward but holding back billing on that until that takes place. The bigger item is the easement acquisition, which is also underway. That really needs to be completed by July of this year in order for the timeline to stay on track. So that's something we need to watch closely also. That doesn't mean the easements have to be in hand, but we have to, if it goes to condemnation, then we have to have that process started by that point because then you can have access to the property. Or if agreements can be reached, then we, obviously, those would have to be in place. So the project is moving forward. It's on schedule at the moment. We just need to make sure that those key elements get taken care of in time. Okay, if you don't mind, you can move on to the next one. Okay, so on the wastewater, so there are several options there. We have an existing half million gallon a day permit, which can be renewed. But if we go beyond that, or when you go beyond that, the T C Q will not allow an additional discharge into the segment of stream that you guys currently discharge into. That section of the river, or a section actually just downstream of that point, is considered, it's listed on the EPA's impaired stream list. It's called 303D. It's a list they keep. And so, and it's a cumulative thing. So we increased it when we did the package plan. And we've gone back to them. I've had discussions with them last week. I met with them and discussed the options for going an additional step. And at that location, they're not going to allow us to do that. So that basically means that we have to, there's a couple of options. We can either find another discharge location, which bypasses that segment of the stream, or go to a no discharge permit. And I'm not going to get into great detail on those right now, but it will come into play on one of the other issues that needs to be resolved, and that's the location of the plant. And I think we're going to talk more about that later. But we've been looking at a number of locations that are possible. The new location of the additional discharge needs to be considered in how you evaluate those sites. So we'll talk more about that in the near future. Talked about one M G D for the planning period. That is, everything we've discussed preliminarily up to this point and what we'll be going forward with is a one M G D build out with the availability, both land-wise and facilities, to expand to that additional half M G D when, after that demand hits. Mentioned determining a discharge location, irrigation option, whichever way you go, there's land involved. Because of the timing and the need to get this process going, that's something that really needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
So if we had to, how much can we discharge? And how much would we have to hold back on that one million gallon? Or what?
Well, you're allowed, currently allowed to discharge a half million gallons a day at the location you currently discharge. That won't change. They'll renew your permit for that amount. When your flows exceed that amount, then you're not going to be able to discharge that additional amount at that location. So, and there are some places downstream that you could, but it's going to.
So we're maxed out at half a million now, and that's all it's ever going to be?
At that location.
At that location.
So there's options. I'm not, it's, that doesn't mean you can't do it. We just have, there's, we're going to have to look at the location and different things to determine where they will allow that to happen. So. Another option that you have that we're looking into is a wholesale agreement, wholesale arrangement. I'm sure you recall, we've looked at a couple of options in the past for other communities. We're currently talking to the city of Fort Worth, and it looks like it may be promising that they will accept the wastewater. And they're making some improvements to their system that might make that economical for you. So those discussions are in the early stages. They're actually looking at it as, at the moment. I talked to them early last week. They were having meetings about the specific topics.
They were permitted for Mary's.
They, yes, they were permitted for a new plant at Mary's Creek, which is just off, just this side of Chapel Creek Road. And those projections actually included Willow Park's flows. That's based on a study that was done several years ago. It actually included more than just Willow Park, but it did include you guys in that projection. They have not, since that time, since those projections were made, they haven't specifically been going forward with you guys in mind, but it is a possibility and they're looking at it now. You can go on to the next slide. Just kind of the important ones, please. Okay, so we already kind of talked about the issues related to cost, the site requirements, piping and conveyance, whether it's to a new location or whether it's going to Fort Worth or somewhere else. The type of plant you build, building out for capacity, what you want to put into it for aesthetics, all those things are going to play into the cost. So right now, what I have is a range of estimates. I've got a range of, as you see there, from between 11 million and 17 million. That depends mainly, that gap really depends more on the type of plant you build than anything else. Most of my lower end projections, whether it's conveying it to someone else or any of the sites we've looked at are closer to the 11 to 12 million dollar range. On the low end, and there's reasons why you might not want to stay on that low end. But that's the range for the various options we're looking at.
And that 11 million, that's location specific too, right? So there's some.
It is. Like I said, I mean, the lower end of that overall range would be.
If it was all land that was donated, the land that was given, or land that we own, if we didn't have a land cost in there, that could.
That could come down some, yes. It includes some land acquisition, yes. And this is, obviously, it's, this is a project that's eligible for state revolving fund program that Brian mentioned earlier, and I think.
First of all, remember, we were preliminary funded in the S R F, we're about 11 million and change.
Seven and a half.
Yeah. So let me, so were we at equivalency double A rated? All right. So I pulled the sheet from Water Development Board today at 5:00. The 20-year S R F equivalency double A bond rated is a 20-year floating average rate of 0%. So I'm about to mathematician the 0% figure. If you wanted to go 30 years on a clean water S R F equivalency double A rated, it jumps up to a whopping 0%.
So given his range, we've got 11 million locked in.
That number can change.
That number can go up.
That can go up.
That's going to be, yeah.
If we want to, our project is going up, then we can get the same interest rate on those funds.
That is if, that's today's rate. So that's not a locked in rate. So, you know, it all depends on the time that we fund.
So you were ranked, you were, the Water Development Board went through their rankings, you came out in the money, and they sent you an invitation to apply for funding. I don't know if you recall, we went through this exact same process with the water. But, and so a decision has to be made now whether to move forward with that application. And if you did, that's probably a three-month process, and at the end of that, at that point, then the interest rates could be set.
Can we start the process for application even if we don't have a final location set?
Yes.
So we want to start that process immediately, I would think.
And if we don't, let's see action for that.
We can, after we come out of executive, I think we can take action because I think that, I think the numbers are going to change after we determine where.
Right, but I mean, taking action on getting the money from saying we don't have to know where.
So.
We can take action on committing to.
The price tag.
Well, yeah, you need to know what the price tag is, but you will have to, you will have to adopt a resolution to be included with the application, so. Yeah, at a subsequent meeting, so.
Any other questions for Derek? Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
By the way, if you want to refi the Fort Worth water project, you were averaged out at 71 basis points, we can refi at 21 basis points.
What are we currently?
I don't know, number five.
We figured out to put roads on the water project.
That would be nice.
Consider enacting on allowing Dana Bowman to install a helipad on his property located at 100 Spanish Oak in Willow Park. Now, a couple of citizens to speak. The first is Miss Sally Stanley. Just picture the name and address, please.
Sally Stanley, and I live at 113 Spanish Oak Road, directly across the street. My concerns are the noise level of takeoffs and landings and how loud it is. And the safety issue that I'm concerned about is whether or not the pilots that are going to be flying these helicopters are commercial pilots or are they private pilots? If they're pilot, private pilot, private pilots, please, I'm a little nervous. According to the state of Texas, they are not required to carry insurance.
Liability insurance.
Which is a big concern for me and the possibility heaven forbid an accident. I'm also wondering whether or not putting a heliport across the street from my house is going to affect my resale value. If there is an airport not too far from here, why does he need a pad on his property to land a helicopter? I understand that he wants it for his foundation, but why can't the helicopters land at the airport? And finally, if this is, if he is granted this, he has a friend who is a pilot that has nothing to do with his foundation, and what is to stop this person or any other person to land on his property?
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my house is probably 50 yards from his house. You guys, some of you have been by there. And where he's been landing these helicopters, it's less than 100 yards. He got power lines going down Spanish Oak Road to feed my house and my other neighbor's house. And like I said, I mean, we're just, all the junkies got back there where he's landing these guys, I mean, he's been letting them land out there now for, I've been out there almost 26 years, and he's been out there close to 20. And he's been doing this without a permit or anything anyway. I don't see where it's safe, and I don't want the noise. And like I said, my wife and I, we're getting up in years. We're over 70. And I want to downsize.
I understand.
And I don't want people looking at my house, and here comes a helicopter over their head and landing, you know, less than 100 yards from them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Richard Davis.
My name is Richard Davis. I live at 2700 Ranch House Road. I've been there since 19... Oh, what?
94.
94? Been a long time. I'm very much against this, going on that property. My property is adjacent to it. They have to fly over me, which they continually do all the time. I don't think that it's wise to have this type of a facility in a residential area. Now, we have a lot of Parker County Airport, other places. The hospital has a helipad. I don't think that can be used for commercial. We just don't need it in a residential area. I don't like the noise factor from it. It scares my deer. That's all I've got to say on it.
Thanks, Richard. We have letters here, two requests that you read. I'm going to read them. This was, this one's from Mr. Fred McCully. I'm going to see the Willow Park accident with us in the helicopter request, which is first having more than 20 minutes. This is the outline operating time of day, locations in nearest residence and allowable decibel sent to O'Shea in the state of Texas requirements. Small communities throughout Texas have such ordinances, battling to legally control noise pollution within the city limits could expose to unoriented lawsuits. That's what we say, McCully. The next one is from Mr. Jerry Miller. I can't be at the city council meeting too, because I would be in the valley of the blues for lack of seeing all the helipads. I live approximately one half mile northwest, across the field from the side of the post helipad. While I have no problem with helicopters or wounded warriors, my father and brothers spent over 60 years collectively at Bill Helicopter, and the oldest of all from Vietnam, I do have a problem with them destroying the peace and quiet up here. Not to mention the stress it will put on pets and wildlife. With all due respect, wounded warriors, I presume they can still reach 100 Spanish Trail by car or truck like the rest of us. All I'm sure it's a noble cause. It shouldn't be at the expense of the neighbors' peace, and in fact, there's an airport three miles away. Only cast skepticism on Mr. Bowman's motive. I say no. And there were other, there were 12 other no's that the council has recorded also. I have a letter from Sheriff Larry Fowler. Mr. Moss, I would like to take this opportunity to provide my support to the city of Willow Park and grant special permission for Sergeant Dana Bowman to retire his helicopter on personal property in the city of Willow Park. Sergeant Bowman is a valuable asset to our local law enforcement and is all for air support we need. Cause of this, I believe allowing Sergeant Bowman will be beneficial to the community. We have another word from Mr. Jim Frank. My name is Jim Franklin, Commercial Helicopter Pilots, or H A B O. I'm a dual-rated commercial pilot, airline and helicopter, with over 10 years of aviation experience, including a degree in aviation with national recognition. No accidents or incidents. Sergeant First Class Dana Bowman is also a dual-rated commercial pilot and certified flight instructor. Proudly flight instructor, all pilots are highly experienced and qualified. As I'm reading the concerns of Willow Park residents on nextdoor.com, it appears these concerns are being overblown. I would like to address these concerns and add additional facts to ease the neighborhood worries. First, there are no military helicopters using the stop as portrayed in the pictures of the UH-1. There are no night operators, no training, no scheduled flights. The large aircrafts will fly in low clouds, fog such as Toby, as mentioned by an individual. The heli stop will be used rarely and only in normal daylight hours. The aircraft in question is classified as live helicopters. This ensures no aircraft over 3,800 pounds, generally six passengers or less. The landing is only secured, fenced, and secluded behind trees. Jim Frank. And the last one is Mr. Frank Andrews. He lives at 33 004 Old Ford Road. I'm okay with Dana Bowman to temporarily operate the heli stop. We have three letters for it. We have 14 letters against. We have an ordinance that we have that the city attorney has read, drafted. And here's some of the ordinance that the council moves forward. These are things stipulations between the city and Sergeant Bowman. Bowman may only operate the heli stop with transportation of wounded military veterans for beneficiaries of a foundation and other foundation purpose. Heli stop may not be used for commercial or profit purposes or by any other helicopters not owned by Bowman and/or his foundation. Bowman shall comply with all federal aviation administration, FAA rules and regulations and all applicable laws, including state, federal, and our local laws, in the operation of the heli stop and helicopter. Bowman shall only land and take off. Bowman shall only land and take off from the heli stop during the following hours, eight AM to eight PM. The city council will approve the location of the heli stop on the property. The city council shall review this permission to operate a heli stop prior to July thirty-first, twenty twenty, and determine if the permission to operate a heli stop shall be extended or terminated. And lastly, the city council may terminate this permission to operate a heli stop earlier than July thirty-first, twenty twenty, if they so desire, in their sole and absolute discretion. Any discussion?
I know for a fact, I talked to Damon, and he's been using that helicopters to come in. I don't know who owns them. I tried to get their numbers one time and turn them into the FAA. But he uses that helicopter to take these kids out, and go out wild hog hunting from the helicopter, coyote hunting. And that's what he wants it for. I don't see where it has to do with warriors. I'm a veteran myself, twenty-two years. And I don't see where it has to do anything with his foundation, other than recreation, and then to go hunting.
And that's, we've talked to Mr. Bowman, and I didn't, I didn't agree, I didn't understand it to be that way. Any other discussion from the council?
Yeah, I'm not seeing a compelling reason that's been spelled out, so, anyway, I just, I'll throw that out.
Compelling reason to support him?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, perhaps some good points. We got an airport nearby, and I don't, the why isn't there, so I don't, I don't get it.
What would the advantage to the city be?
To the city?
Yeah, I mean, we've approved things before that's not popular with neighbors, but it benefited the city. How would this benefit the city?
I don't see a direct benefit to the city.
Okay. And where, where, where does Mr. Jim Frank live? Or Tim Frank, Jim Frank? You read his statement?
I've got a phone number. I don't have an address.
You don't have an address? Okay, so we don't know if he's a resident?
No. Okay. You got thirty seconds. Go ahead.
I understood this originally to be a temporary permit. The last thing you read, which I couldn't hear very well, was that the proposed ordinance? Or is somebody suggesting that should be an ordinance?
This is the ordinance that we're proposing between the city and him.
But you've already made your mind.
No, no, no.
So my question is, is this temporary until July, the whatever?
We haven't done, we're not doing anything until we vote on it in a second.
Yeah.
Not this happening.
If it were to proceed, does it say that it's temporary until July something, and then further decision?
Yes.
Yes.
So, my take on it is, I'm a pilot myself, and I've already explained to my neighbor over there that if I had a helicopter, I'd park it in my backyard, too. I'm a firm believer in property rights, and everybody has an opportunity to use their property as they see fit, with the exception that of noise and, you know, something dangerous. Flying a helicopter in and out, you know, there's specific areas that are concerned to me. First of all, if we do this, it's got to be VFR, visual flight rules, you know, having a specific time, eight, eight AM until eight PM, it's say daylight hours, because of time changes and stuff like that. And I would like to hear from Mr. Bowman himself on the number of operations he's expecting. Now, if we're talking once a month, that, that may be doable, but if we're talking six times a day, that's different.
We talked to Mr. Bowman himself, the city manager, and Captain Franklin went out, out a couple months ago. The agreement we have, and I didn't see it in this ordinance, was once a month. He would use the, he would make one flight a month with a helicopter. So it's not.
Okay. So, I get this idea of, you know, saying, oh, it's only going to be once a month, it's only going to be during these daytime areas, it's only going to be this one helicopter. How do we enforce that? I don't see, I don't see it as being enforceable, because we can't pass an ordinance that's not enforceable. And also, also, I get the private property rights, and it gets kind of, it gets kind of tricky in town, because when you're in town, you have neighbors, you have things close by, and like I mentioned before, whenever we've passed things in the past that haven't been popular with the immediate neighbors, it's been something that's benefited the five thousand in the city, which is why I asked, you know, asked city staff, what benefit would there be to the rest of the citizens? To inconvenience, we had sixteen noes, I believe, that, you know, that would offset, offset upsetting sixteen residents. I just, there are too many, there are too many holes here.
I don't think there's, there are that many holes. I think it's, I agree with the one gentleman in the email, I think it's been blown out of proportion.
But where does he live?
Lives off on Spanish Oak Trail.
Mr. Frank? Jim Frank?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
But I'm saying, personally, my personal opinion has been blown out of.
Okay.
I think helicopter, it's a small helicopter. I think people visualize helicopters, they think of care fly, or human, or something like that flying. It's a small helicopter.
But we can tell it flies over your house.
And it's noisy. And it comes right down Spanish Oak Road.
But I'm just saying, that's, we will, we'll agree to disagree. We can't have any more comments. We've had, we've had a couple of comments, I'm sorry.
Yeah, technically, technically, guys, we're not supposed to allow comment, Derek.
So any other, any other discussion?
So, if that's the case, and Mr. Bowman is talking one operation per month, I'd like to see that in your order.
I've made notes, we can, whatever amendment you want to make to the ordinance, we can modify it now and do that language. Have it for the mayor to sign tomorrow, or whenever.
What do you think?
So I asked our city manager to see how many residents have called complaining about noise in regards to the helicopters and airplanes that fly from Carswell. I mean, they're all day, they're sometimes at night. Okay, I had two extremely large helicopters fly over my house, shook my house, you know, is what it is. I support our military. Bottom line, I support our military. Okay? So, they're gonna do what they're gonna do. I don't see, looking and researching as far as the decibels that this type of helicopter that Mr. Bowman has is going to create such a noise that is more extreme than what's been flying in and out of Carswell.
Does it own a helicopter?
Than his foundation or?
His foundation doesn't own one yet. It's just buddies that have one.
Okay.
But they're landing, that's the...
Right. So, and I live next to the airport, so I've got planes flying over my house. Right, it is.
Yeah.
But I think with some of the revisions that Councilman McConn had recommended, I think that's, that's a good path.
If it was enforceable, if, if it was enforceable...
Could we, could we have, we've had a public discussion. Will we please finish the council, and could we please do that? Thank you.
If it was, if it was enforceable, there's no way for us to enforce it, that, for it to be just one small helicopter, once a month. It, it's, it's not, that's not enforceable. I don't see that as being a valid reason, or it...
I think, and I think Brian was with me when we met with him, Captain Franklin. I think there was going to be correspondence between him, Seth, and the police department when he, when he said he was going to use it, he would contact the law enforcement of Willow Park, contact him when he was going to use the helicopter.
But our police department has enough to do already than to become air traffic control. I mean, they're having to cover a whole city already, to cover the interstate, to cover our neighborhoods, to answer calls. Find, find another officer to run air traffic control?
No, we're not talking about air traffic. Are any other discussion, and everyone has their feelings about this? Any other questions or comments from the council? We're gonna, do we have a motion to consider an act on allowing Dana Bowman to install a helipad on his property located at one hundred Spanish Oak in Willow Park? Do we have a motion? We have no motion?
The only motion I want to make is that I'm, I'm not going to vote on it until this is amended.
Okay.
You can make a motion with the amendment.
You want to take or amend the motion, amend the resolution to include add VFR?
Daylight hours.
Revise section D to say daylight hours, and limit the number of operations per year or per month?
Per month.
Or to one per month?
One per month.
Can we do that? Is that?
Yes.
I agree on that one.
Can I make another suggestion to that? Sure. We have a couple of things on here. I would like, if to the greatest extent possible, that once the city has received notification, if a resident wants to opt in and be notified when there would be a departure or a landing or an operation, that, that they could be notified and opt in through an email system, so we can notify them. And then we put a, you want to put a seven-day window on when he can operate, or is it?
Notification.
Yeah, what, what kind of notification period do you want on that? Seven days. Seven day? So seven day notification period, the ability of a resident to opt in to be notified as well when that's going to take place.
I've got one more.
Okay.
Going back to the Stanleys, they brought up a really good point that I really respect, is the insurance part of it. I think we need to have something on there that either the aircraft or the people operating the aircraft have to carry the proper insurance that's required. So, I appreciate that feedback.
I agree.
And, and based off of the other comments, too, right, and what Amy was suggesting, right, if he lands there without approval, right, it's automatically revoked.
Yeah, and I'll add, that was one of my concerns, is we need to include penalties for noncompliance for the resolution.
Can we assess monetary penalty on that?
So that's why I put in G, no, no, this is the one. That's why G, we terminated at any time, but require cancellation.
We can barely keep up with our own ordinance, the ordinances that we have in place enforcing those. We have one code enforcement officer. It just does not seem feasible with our current resources.
We have a motion. We have a motion, and we'll vote on it.
Yeah.
We have a motion.
You gotta vote on the amendment first.
Just so we're clear, it's the resolution that was presented with the changes, that we add a section for VFR, that we amend section D to strictly eight AM to eight PM, and just say daylight hours, that we add a section for, limit the number of operations to one a month, and that we add another section for providing for an insurance provision, and that we add another section requiring him provide a seven, we have notes in here already.
Notification to the city.
Yeah, that we do a seven-day notification to public safety, and then with the ability of the citizens to opt in on an email notification as well. So when we get it, we can, if you're in the, if you're in the email system, we'll email you.
Well, we're revoking.
So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the city.
One last thing. You have July, we adopted this in February. Do you want to, is this a six-month contingency? Do you want to keep it as a July thirty-first, or do you want to move it back?
Keep it in July, and we have the ability to revoke it sooner.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas authorizing Dana Bowman to temporarily operate a heli stop on property owned by him located at one hundred Spanish Oak Road, Willow Park, Texas pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in this resolution, plus the amendments as read by our city administrator.
Second.
We have a second? Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Two? We have two. All in, all opposed. Motion, please. Thank you. Item number six, to consider an act on how it's going to be considered for future council meetings. We have, pursuant to tonight, we've got a number of issues. I'll let everybody follow up. Okay, future council meetings. I've got a couple of things that we're gonna add for the March twenty-fourth meeting. We'll do a resolution on the SRF for the wastewater treatment plant, per Derrick's presentation. Anything, I've got a number of other things that are already on there, as anything council needs to add.
So, our discussions, the bond committee authorization.
Thank you. That's on the other page.
Yes, we call on the, August seventeenth. Called by August the seventeenth.
Yeah.
The leadership is telling. I do believe that we're, it's on your list, but I'm just saying about lab financing discussion that Eric Mahal will come in for, that Greg had requested. I'd also like to request that we discuss and set any dates for any strategic planning meetings that council may have after changeover in May. We heard zoning ordinance changes, ideas, if we could get an update on where we stand on working on this, just to see what the progress is for staff.
Would you all, would you like that to be recommendations we ought to take action on, or is it a continuation of the discussion?
If we're ready for that, that's great. I'd just like an update if we're not ready.
Can you have it prepared by the twenty-fourth?
Yes, yes. Just, just to make sure we're on it. And then finally, an update on the website, to see whether, when and where that will be launched. Thank you.
So, I have one, one item, just maybe just for discussion. Authorizing, and I'm here to chief west of Art Attack, that authorizing electric vehicles, ATVs, on our roofs.
That'll be an interesting discussion, because there's some state statutes that, I mean,
Also, the virginity quote and scope of work.
I still have not received any information on that.
There's information you requested from you, but I don't know what's going on. I'll reach out to him again.
Anything else? Okay.
You and your comments real quick, and...
We've got to set the next day for council meeting, next one.
Sounds like it's twenty-fourth.
Parts twenty-fourth. Need to take an, need to take action on that. I need a motion.
We need a motion? That's a regular scheduled meeting.
I thought we were going to do a motion. Is that a derision?
Yeah, it's only canceled.
So, it just said why, I'm on schedule to be in Utah at another airport base that we, but it's not, it's not confirmed.
Are you going to be skiing?
No.
Can we do any real quick? Anyway? No, sorry. Okay, we're gonna do mayor council comments. We had a clergy luncheon yesterday, Monday. We had sixty-plus clergy elected officials, mayors, city managers at the DOS Heritage Center. It was a great event. Our citizen Ray Field Wright spoke, and it was well attended. It's our, we hoped, it's our first annual. We had a couple of sponsors. There was no tax money used by those guys' lunch. So we had a couple of sponsors, and I thought it went real well. March twenty-seventh, the Hogan Foundation, the groundbreaking for the building. March twenty-seventh, Hogan Foundation, the groundbreaking for the building, that's on a Friday, so that's an exciting time. Hogan Foundation, groundbreaking will be Friday, March twenty-seventh, twelve-thirty. March twenty-eighth, we have Little Park. Is that right, Rose?
Yes, sir.
Also, Rose is a big help in our clergy luncheon, too, reaching out to the clergy responses, and I wanted to give a shout out to Rose, too. That's all I have.
Staff recently completed public funds investment training last week in Austin. I can tell you, a good time was had by all. If you've never done that, you should really go sit through it, because it's fun.
Watching paint dry is more fun than that class.
Unfortunately, while we were down there, I wanna give kudos to Chief West, as she received the public service award at the Chamber banquet on Thursday night.
Paddy Thompson Award for the Chamber.
Well deserved. The agency is probably the best, is the best, she's the best chief I've ever worked, so I have no problem saying that at all. Anyway, I wanted to congratulate you, give her kudos, good job.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, this time we'll be going into executive session at eight, twelve p.m. We'll need to vacate the chamber, please.